And I will, well, do we have to?
I'll make a motion to elevate Mike as a full member to meet the quorum.
How do we do that when the meeting isn't even convened yet?
You just called the meeting to order.
Okay, I'm calling it to order.
I have to second my motion.
Seven oh four and Melissa moved to elevate Mike. Okay, and I will second that motion. And all in favor and Mike, you vote on that. And seeing no dissenters that motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is to amend if necessary and then approve the minutes of our last regular meeting, which was September thirteenth. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes and?
Can we just label those for the next meeting? I didn't review them. Sorry.
I'm okay with it.
I was not present at the meeting, so I probably shouldn't comment.
Oh, here comes in Carol. So let's let her join.
Sorry, I ran really late. I was rushing.
All right. The meeting's been called to order. We elevated Mike because we were, you know, trying to proceed with our quorum. We are tabling the minutes because Melissa hadn't had time to review. So we can do that in regular meeting, which is fine. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Lynn Worthington is here from the public. Lynn, do you wish to make a comment at this time?
No comment. Thanks for asking.
Thanks. Okay, so let's get into the reason for our meeting, which is the proposal for the purchase of street trees that Yost put together with the assistance of Bruce Bennett. You all received a copy of the proposal, so we know what the budget is for that project and what the trees are that would be planted. Consistent with our discussion at the last meeting, I'm sure you saw the the effort to ensure that they were native trees that would be planted. So I can show the proposal up on screen if you want. But if you wanted information on the discrete elements of the proposal, did have that. I thought I had it up.
I don't need it unless others need it. I don't need it.
Okay, okay, so.
Sugar maple, red maple sycamore, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So we changed from a birch, from a river birch to a red maple because it fits a sight bit better than the river birch because river birch would spread more. So I think it's a good combination and the sizes are like was discussed at last meeting. They're a bit bigger than we usually do. But the prices are all wholesale prices. So I think these are good prices.
So as I'm looking at it, Yost, the the proposal that Bruce put together is comes to thirteen hundred and ten dollars. But then you said that there would be about a hundred and fifty in in mulch. Is that correct?
Yeah, hundred to hundred fifty in compost was mulch.
So are we looking at, what are we looking at then? A budget of fifteen hundred is that?
Between fourteen hundred and fifty nine.
So I guess. How much is are the actual people that are getting these trees putting in? Normally, we ask them to put in a little bit so that they have a little skin in the game.
Well, that's something we should probably discuss next time. We might in the future share the costs like we did in the past when we did plantings on Elizabeth Street. The homeowners shared and the cost was fifty fifty, I think. And they also promised to maintain the trees. In this case, we haven't done that.
Yost, can you clarify for me whether or not the planting will be done on private property?
It's on the the street line. It's so the the right away from the state in this case. I'm not sure how wide it is. It's at least fifty feet. The road, I think, what is twenty five, twenty four feet wide maybe? And then so on either side, thirteen feet or so.
And so do we know though? I mean, I don't, that is something that was really unclear to me from the emails and the proposal. It seemed like we weren't certain whether or not this was town property or private property, which makes a different.
So it's a state, state road and private property. So it may, where the tree goes, it's not exactly clear whether it would be on the just on state side or just on private side. One of them probably in the bigger island is probably on the private property. We want to set that back a bit further from the road. But we've done it in the past too. They're always pretty much at the edge of the right of way and we don't measure out who's side it's on. It doesn't really matter because it's the homeowner always regards that as their property. But even when it's in fact town or state property and and they maintain it, the homeowners usually so.
Well, yeah, but we, I mean, isn't that part of the point is that we don't have a commitment from the homeowners to maintain the trees in this case. We told them that we would do the watering this fall and asked them to do it afterward, and they did not make that commitment. Isn't that right?
Well, yeah, Bruce hasn't heard that from them, but we have to impress that on them that they do that.
Usually we have them sign a form.
There's what?
Usually we have them sign a form and they give us a little bit of money. I don't understand why we're not doing it the way we normally do.
Well, with with the plantings for Kent Center School, we haven't been doing that. We only did that years ago when we did a number of trees along Elizabeth Street. But the several of the trees on that we planted with Kent Center School, they were, the first season also watered by the town or by the fire department sometimes. And then the homeowners have all taken it over. And in this case, we can also ask the IRA from the liquor store to do like the sycamore because it's next right next to his property. And previously, we had talked with the veterinarian and she was willing to water a tree there. So the veterinarians, they're not the owners of the property. That's Renberg. So they they leased it from them, but she was willing to water the trees and that are closest to her place.
I I hear all that and I know that we've had good success with Kent Center School. I'm, I am a little bit concerned about, I mean, this is, you know, in my mind, if we're planting a tree on private property, we're we're basically making a gift of this fifteen hundred dollars to this property owner. And we don't, we don't really have any teeth, you know? So I mean, what is, if something came up, I mean, most people would like to get a tree. But there'd be nothing that would prevent them from cutting it down in two years or moving it or?
Well, Bruce Bennett as town, as tree warden has something to say about that.
What does he have to say on private?
I think he needs to sign off on it if it's big cats got along the road.
A private owner can't do what they want with their own tree?
I think not along the right of way.
I don't think that's accurate.
I also need a clarification. The clarification I need is that we're talking about three separate property owners. One, one being Ira, one being the veterinarian, like why is it?
All the property is owned by one owner.
All the property is owned by one owner and Ira is renting from them?
No, I was next door, but one of the trees, the sycamore would be in the grass strip that's between his parking lot and the parking lot or the driveway that goes to the back. That's on the Renberg property, but it would be on the Renberg site.
And the right of way is because it's Bridge Street? Like when we put the trees in on Lane Street, there's no right of way because that's private.
Every, every road has a right of way.
Say it again.
A state road has a larger right of way than a town road.
And if the tree were to go into the right of way, then there's nothing to negotiate with the owner because it's the right of way? That's a question.
Well, you still have to get permission from the homeowner. I don't know if legally you would need permission, but that's the proper thing to do. Because it will have major impact on their property.
And I'm so sorry, Yost, but I really, from the last meeting, understood not that this was, I I did not understand that the trees were going on private property. I thought they were going on town right of way. I I guess, I don't know, you know, that was, I don't know if that like sailed by me or not.
Well, I mean, if you look at the town tax maps, they show the right of way of Bridge Street as only fifty feet. But like Melissa said, usually state roads have a wider right of way. So I'm not quite sure how much the right of way is. Yeah, I couldn't find any information about that.
Well, then I'm still confused. So the right of way is not, it's not a right of way on the owner's property. Does the owner, the owner's not the owner of that right of way? The town is the owner of the?
The right of way is a strip that includes the roadway and usually is it fifty feet wide? So twenty five foot from the center of the road in either direction is belongs to the town, who is the road owner or to the state if it's on a state road.
So if the trees went into the right of way, then there's not an issue with the property owner? Is that correct or am I not clearing, understanding this?
Well, you still have to get the permission, but then it'd be, yeah, on state property. But I mean, we have a sidewalk there and we can't put it too close to the sidewalk. So we may be fifteen or twenty feet from the edge of the road. So we may be actually on the private property. But to me, it doesn't really matter which side it is.
It, it's really important that we get the paperwork signed that we normally use for planting trees with our Cougar Fund money. That's really important, Yost.
Okay, but Bruce is going on vacation for a while. He's available next week. And he can get Rick Osborne to help next week. I don't want to wait too long with the tree planting, so I I don't know if he can get that permission or I can try to find the owner.
I went online to try and find examples of Connecticut towns, urban and street tree programs. And I found a lot of good examples, actually. I remember, I think Norwalk, Hampden, but there are several. And they all use forms. Many of them where a homeowner can actually request a tree, but makes a commitment, often a financial commitment as well as, you know, some kind of a commitment to caring for the tree. A lot of the programs have inventories like Bruce has been putting together, which is great. It actually made me kind of excited to put together something that was a little bit more structured than, you know, the the kind of casual nature of our conversations around this. I I I do, I I tried to give you a heads up, Yost, that it would be helpful to know whether or not the trees were going on private property or going on town owned property. Personally, I have a really hard time voting for the expenditure of the Cougar Funds without knowing, you know, it just feels feels a little too loose for me.
So what difference does it make on which side of the line it is?
Wait, I I think the tree has to go where it's going to survive the best. And if the tree is partly on private land, then we have to do whatever we need to do to accommodate that. I don't think we should place the tree based on our procedures. But Melissa, when we put the trees on Lane Street, even though there was no right of way, I mean, that's those, they filled out that form for the Cougar Fund?
They did and they paid a little money and there is a right of way, Carol. There's a right of way. Well, your road is private, but like Connie's front yard, there's a, there's a right of way on her front yard. On my front yard, because I'm on a state road, I have a bigger right of way by the state. So every property does have a right of way. But yes, on Elizabeth Street, when we put it in at Carina Omera's, when we put it in all the various places, when we put it in at Golden Falcon, for example, Katie Moore signed property paperwork and they put in.
So then, then the problem is if we want to move ahead, what would be the best thing we can do to get the form, the appropriate form signed? And still kind of get things done in a timely way? Is it possible? What can we do?
Well, I think Wendy has the forms, if I'm not mistaken, would have been.
I might be able to find them too.
And I think that Yost has to have a conversation with the property owner and get the form signed. We have to decide on a sum of money that puts enough, this is three trees, puts enough like skin in the game that they're going to take care of them. And then we can move on it once the paperwork is in, I think. I I just don't want to rush something when one property owner is getting three trees to a sum of fifteen hundred dollars. And I, it's a great project. I think it's great. I just think that we have to remember the steps that we've done in the past and follow them. We've, we've set precedent.
Well, how can we expedite the steps is what I'm saying. I'm agreeing. We have to do the right steps. We have to.
I think Yost has to have a conversation with the property owner and it it can't always go through Bruce, I don't think. I don't think that makes sense because Bruce is not part of the conversation.
It it might, but Bruce is presenting to us in our November, December, actually, meeting. And I think that if we want a structure of, you know, if we want to support and assist in a street tree planting program and an inventory of town trees, that it should be, it should be, it should have structure, you know? It should emulate what other towns have put in place to really make sure that there is, you know, that there is some kind of a cataloging of trees, some idea of where trees are needed, some engagement of people living on the street where we're going to plant trees, like Yost said, you know? Even though we would expect a commitment from the private property owner, there's nothing to say that, you know, if that private property owner didn't mind their neighbor coming over and doing the watering, that that couldn't work. But they, you know, they need to know that too. You can't just be like, well, Ira will do it. Because, you know, if it's private property, then, you know, Ira would be trespassing, you know, without the knowledge and this agreement with the private property owner. So it just, it feels like it's not fully baked to me.
So if, if Yost speaks with Bruce and they speak with the property owners and we could get their traditional forms signed, can we meet again so that we can vote so that we get this tree planting season and we don't have to wait till the spring?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I I think that we just have to put steps A, B, and C before, in place before we are promising anything out of the Cougar Fund. We have a responsibility, don't we?
So that's the plan then?
So then it would be late October that we plant them?
Well, maybe it would be, it depends how quickly you could contact the property owner.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like there, we know what we need. I, we can't have a discussion off of the meeting. So we couldn't circulate a proposal and all those forms and inform.
No, 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 I got it.
Talk about it together, but we could mentally go, okay, seems like we have all we need. And then we could call another special meeting just for the purpose of voting on it. I I'm not hearing, you know, major pushback in terms of, you know, the the trees proposed, the idea of, you know, what the age of the trees should be, you know? That all seems, you know, like a really good plan. The cost, you know, the fact that they're wholesale, great. You know, these, these are the things we need, we need to make sure if it is going on private property, that the private property owners are engaged and on board. And we want to do that in some formal way to protect our investment.
So the eleventh is our next meeting, Conservation Commission meetings. Yost, if we, if we had everything in place and the meeting on the eleventh, is Bruce still in town or is he gone?
He'll be gone then. I think, as I remembered, he would be back the nineteenth or something like that, or maybe a bit later.
Is that too late to plant a tree, the nineteen?
No, we can do it. I I hope he can still get the trees that he had located. But yeah, late October, they they should still be available.
But if you, if you worked quickly and by next Wednesday, the fourth, if, if we had all the permissions in place, we had the forms that everybody were comfortable with, could, could that be done next week? Because then we could call a meeting for Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Well, if somebody can get me.
What was so great about this is, that was terrific is the idea that you got Rick Osborne to to help. That's really, that made it possible to get.
Well, Bruce did.
All right. So what do you want to do, guys? Do you want to try to get it and do a special meeting next week if it's possible?
If that's going to speed things up and Bruce really can like get things moving, I'm all for that. As long as the property owners and all the paperwork comes together. And I think we should, you know, go back in our records and see how much money the the town, the 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 people have paid in the past, you know, what percentage of the tree or was it a flat fee? I can't remember. I I seem to remember it was like twenty five dollars.
Wendy would probably have all this information.
But I might have it as well.
I'm assuming it needs all to be wrapped up so that we can make a decision. I, you know, it, I did say that at the last meeting, so I'm just a little.
I mean, I'm, I'm more concerned about the commitment to taking care of the tree than I am about the money.
I agree.
We have set a, we have set a precedent. So I think that.
But it's one owner, so it's going to be a higher fee.
I, you know. Now, I'll, I can find the forms.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, you send me the.
I feel like it was fifty dollars per tree, but I could be wrong.
Oh, no, all right.
So it wasn't fifty percent?
Well, what what Melissa is suggesting is that it was some percentage of the value of the tree because of course we weren't, we weren't planting trees that were quite as as far along. But it would, you know, again, I, I do think it would be important to have a plan for, so that we knew, are we planting it on private property or not? Because equally as inappropriate as planting it on private property without the the, you know, formal permission of the private owner and the commitment of the private owner would be to commit the private owner to taking care of and planting a tree in property that wasn't theirs. So, you know, to me, we, we just, we need to know where are we planting a tree? You know, who, who owns the property where we're planting a tree?
And what if it's.
Given that we want both the information about the ownership and we want the landowners to have buy-in, let's wait till the eleventh.
Okay.
I'm not, I agree with you, Mike, but if Yost and Bruce could wrap it up before then and it means they can get planting sooner, I'm so fine with jumping into a meeting for five minutes to make a decision. It's, it doesn't take a lot to jump on a Zoom to make a decision. If it means that they can get to it a little sooner so that it's, the tree has a better chance of surviving, fine. So I'm not opposed to that. I just want to say, get the ducks in a row is the most important thing.
Absolutely.
And so what's your requirement of having the owner contribute? Because Bruce had not asked that of the owner to contribute. And the idea was that these, these were going to be donated by the town. I mean, they're, in fact, they're town trees also, because they're along the, our roads in our village.
At a certain point, we tell them you're getting a fifteen hundred dollar value, you know, and we come up with something reasonable. So.
Yeah, but if they're not willing to pay five hundred dollars, you say, no, then we don't do it.
I really don't think it was five hundred dollars, Yost. I don't think it was anywhere near that. And I do think that there is some need to get some kind of buy-in.
And it's not like this owner can't afford it. But it may not be a priority then. Who knows? I don't know. And the owner, owner doesn't live there and leases out the buildings.
I, which to me is just one more reason that, you know, having a program that actually includes outreach and talking to with people in the community about the need for street trees would make sense.
And they do run their business there. They run their own business there. Their business, it, the gun shop is there and they run their own business there also.
Okay, so is that a Renberg who?
Yes.
So Yost, Yost needs to know as soon as possible what figure to ask them for.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if I can find it right now. There's, I have this, I have something called Elizabeth Street Tree Planting Proposal from Wendy. Let's just take a quick look. I don't want to take too much of your time. No. And I have Wendy's communications about the plan for the tree planting. This is an email.
I mean, we planted those back in two thousand fifteen, I believe, the ones.
This is in eleven, in November two thousand fifteen and what?
In two thousand sixteen, they, we noticed that the Kent School had done weed whipping on them and the trees were failing. And there was some discussion about the fact that they did pay in, so.
The number that I have in my records is fifty percent. The number that I have in my records is fifty percent.
Oops.
We could research, I mean, by the eleventh, we could research other towns' programs. Try to find out what other towns are typically making private property, uh, owners do and pay. Come up with something reasonable with more of our commission present. And, you know, start to make inroads towards developing our own program as well as figuring out what to do with this fall's proposal. I, I think it's unlikely that we'll be able to get everything resolved in a couple of days, uh, this week. But I think by the eleventh, we can have something that would allow this to go forward, uh, this year.
I mean, the, the thing that makes it more challenging is that because Rick Osborne is helping us, we're able to get bigger trees. And because they're bigger trees, they're more expensive. And so we're asking for a higher, fifty percent of a higher number is gonna end up coming back and biting us, so.
Well, it's a value and maybe a property owner wants a bigger tree that is providing shade. So it's just really all, you know. The, the, the potential for something like this is a really good engagement with private property owners in, on the streets and, you know, within our village. So I, I wouldn't get too discouraged, uh, but we have more work to do.
But I mean, um, if you go with fifty percent, if I now mention that to the property owner, he may well, or they may well say, no. Um, and then saying, well, that wasn't told, uh, mentioned to me before. Why do you come up with it now? So, um.
That's why I'm saying it might make sense to look at what other towns are doing. Because if they don't own all have fifty percent, I mean, you know, it, it must, it, it can't be the case that every other town is using fifty percent. And there might be other ways of figuring this out. And there may be, for all we know, you know, descriptions of when people make exceptions. And so I just, not knowing any of that, it's really hard to talk about it. But we, we will know more. So maybe.
Well, I mean, we can set our own. Uh, Yose. Their own amount or percentage, so we don't have to comply with other towns do every, they all choose their own numbers and we can do.
I know, Yose, I'm suggesting that it might be less if we worked with other towns' methodologies. So what I would suggest is maybe you hold off on talking to the Renbergs until we take a look into that so that you know and don't ask them, you know, for seven hundred and fifty dollars and get a no, and then, you know, basically burn a bridge. So I would, I, you know, to me, there's, there's a possibility that it might not be fifty percent. Even though our previous discussions and, and Wendy's email says this, says the one, you know, the nice thing about requiring fifty percent is that, you know, people can get a smaller or a bigger tree according to, you know, what their desires are. So there was some method to our, uh, setting that percentage as the way that we were gonna model our program. But I think it makes sense to, to go and, and, and see what other towns are using, just in case we want to consider that.
So if anybody finds out some information, can you pass it on to me?
Sure. And if you find out anything, you can pass it on as well. And there's nothing wrong with passing on information, but please, let's not discuss it. In groups of more than two.
And the other information we want to have passed along or researched is, um, I guess, the right of way, but we don't know exactly how, how much the right of way goes, or do we know that?
Um, I can ask Rick Osborne, maybe he knows.
It would be helpful to have a site plan or some kind of a survey that shows that.
But that's not, uh, not totally reliable.
Yeah, not the assessor's map.
The Land Use Office. Why wouldn't you ask?
I can ask them, but yeah, I don't know if they have anything, uh, else, but I can ask.
The, the town should probably have maps of its right of way, I would say.
Especially since they just.
Well, it's a, it's a state right away.
But they just did the sidewalk there and they had to figure out all the, the right aways, so.
Well, that's true.
If, if that information is in the Land Use Office.
Yeah.
Are we ready to move?
Second discussion. I, I really like the idea of the way we're thinking forward. So that as we continue to do this in more places, we'll have a real precedent. And we do want to continue thinking about where else in town we want trees to go in and how we would be involved with that.
But I also think, Carol, it's very important that we get in writing how the Cougar Fund should be spent going forward. So that, that there's a, a pathway to how to use the Cougar Fund for others when we are no longer on the Conservation Commission.
We can discuss that. We do have a description of the Cougar Fund and its allowable uses. And it would be, uh, that would be a, that would be a good place to start. It's not like we have nothing, so. Um, so we can, uh, we can take another look at that when we're talking about the architecture of our program. I think for the purpose of tree planting this fall, though, you know, it, it did seem like the, uh, you know, that, that, that there was a, um, favorable, uh, y- y- you know, that, that the commission was in favor of spending some money from the Cougar Fund in order to plant trees this fall, so.
I would, I would think around the time when, after having nothing to do with this particular initiative, around the time when, uh, when Bruce presents to us in November and we're looking at the bigger picture, then maybe like December or so, I could start putting, I should put on the agenda a discussion of the Cougar Fund's mission. I mean, right now, it doesn't seem like the time to play with it, but that going forward, I think to get it all solidified, we should start.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and Bruce is coming in December. He can't come on the day, he's not.
All right, so then after he presents. Maybe on the January meeting, I'll put on to discuss the Cougar mission.
Am, am I wrong, Yose? Was I thinking?
He, he wrote that he was.
And he couldn't do October and, okay, so it might be November, I'm sorry. Okay, um, okay. I just want to move to this second discussion item. This is quick. This is the revisions to our, um, our ordinance, uh, protecting farmers from nuisance suits. And, uh, if you recall, we set our meeting tonight for Thursday because we wanted the Board of Selectmen's meeting to happen so that we knew what the Board of Selectmen thought of the revisions and also, uh, knew what they were thinking with respect to any date, uh, at which the public would consider, uh, our revisions as well as the other ordinances that the Board of Selectmen has, uh, planned. Um, that meeting was canceled, unfortunately, and they haven't rescheduled it. So that's the report.
So if it, if it gets rescheduled before the eleventh, um, I'll put it on the agenda. And if not, I won't put.
Yeah, you know, I put it on the agenda anyway, Carol, because, you know, we were going to run it by both Board of Selectmen and P and Z. And there's no, um, order preference there. I mean, we just wanted to know what both of them thought, so that it's not sequential. So I'm going to, um, well, it doesn't really matter, actually. I'm gonna ask to be on the agenda of P and Z with the revisions, uh, for their regular meeting, which is the day after our regular meeting.
That's okay, uh, it, it'll be an update.
Okay, okay. All right. Uh, we can't entertain any further business, so the only thing for us to do is adjourn. Uh, it is seven forty-three. And I will stop the recording.